Today on the Dennis Michael Lynch Podcast, imagine you're a doctor for 40 years, a surgeon. You've been helping your community, has only worked in two places your whole life. But then you go to a school board meeting and you talk about how dangerous it is for children to wear masks in school. Nine days later, you're told you're no longer wanted. Today, Dr. Jeffrey Horak out of Minnesota joins me to tell his story.
Why aren't the people in Washington putting themselves in harm's way? Why aren't they walking the walk as well as talking the talk? Their position in Washington is to do the will of the people. I don't see anybody in Washington doing the will of the people anymore. The only one who really puts his money where his mouth is, is Dennis Michael Lynch.
Hello, I am DML and you are listening to the Dennis Michael Lynch Podcast. The exclusive sponsor of this program is dmlcbd.com. Go there today and get the best CBD products that can make you feel great again. This podcast is for independent thinkers who want to recapture the great American experience, and they know it all starts with sharing the unfiltered facts, truth, and opinions I give you every day. Today's podcast will both shine a light on the solutions that can fix our nation's biggest problems, and it will make you the smartest person in the room. Here we go. Dr. Jeffrey Horak, it's a name you probably don't know unless you live in a certain part of Minnesota. He has been a surgeon for nearly 40 years. He started off in Detroit and then he wound up in Minnesota. This man that you're about to meet is God fearing, very soft spoken, but takes his job very, very seriously, make no mistake. He's passionate about children. He's passionate about healthcare, and he's passionate about the freedoms that we carry as an American. Here is a small little taste of what he said at a school board meeting last month.
For the people who have entrusted us to put yourself in their shoes. I don't know how you put yourself in that one of these, this child has to wear a mask, yet can't do her with a therapy or speech therapy. I don't know when you do that. You mandate this across the board, that's a tough place to go. Who does God put in charge of these kids? Their parents, right? God gave each one of these kids to their child, I'm sorry, each one of these kids to their parents, and they speak for them. They may be wrong, they may be dumb, they may be perfect in their decisions, but it's still their responsibility. It's not yours. God gave it to them. Honor their wishes. Either side of the fence, and let them decide if they want to go to school here or not. They'll go to another school and pass out. So pay it. If they want to stay here and not want to pass, so be it. Take care of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, it appears that those comments cost this man his job. Again, keep in mind, for nearly 40 years, he's been practicing in medicine. He's got a great record, and yet that, what you just heard, was enough for him to be removed, terminated from his position. They gave up a great surgeon because of his position on masking. Now with that in mind, the community rallied behind him.
This is America, and I don't think people should be punished with losing their job or exercising their right to free speech.
We're very proud of him. For him to stand up and lose his job tells you something about man.
Supporters showed up across from Lake Region Healthcare with signs in support of Dr. Horak, enchanted things like.
Fight for freedom! Fight, fight!
Many in the community shared stories on how the doctor impacted them personally. One nurse that worked with him told me, quote, "He was always kind to me. He's very easy to work with. He listens, most importantly, to what his nurses ask of him, and he isn't afraid to educate." Dr. Horak spoke to the crowd to clear any confusion.
At the request of the parents in this community, as a professional physician, I spoke to the Ferguson Falls Board Meeting, Ferguson Falls School Board Meeting, exercising my right to freedom of speech.
Dr. Horak believed it should be the parent's choice to send their kids to school with a mask on.
Nine days later, I was asked to resign or be terminated. I chose to be terminated.
This good man is losing his job, he's losing his career, at least temporarily so, because he stood up and said that it is a parent's choice to whether or not they mask their child, that the science doesn't support masking children, and he talked about the power of God? Cancel culture is on its height in this country. It is standing on the top of the totem pole, and it is a sin that we lose a great doctor at a time when we need doctors more now than ever. Our population is growing, but our doctors aren't. And so a ridding of great people? That doesn't make any sense. So what happened here is we invited Dr. Jeffrey Horak to join me today, and you're going to meet him in two seconds here. But before we do that, I want to play a quick clip from a local news station that interviewed him, and I want you, and I specifically am playing this clip because I want you to see the love in this man's heart. And then, right after we play the clip, Jeffrey's going to jump in. Here you go. Play it.
News of the firing has created an uproar in the community with the hashtag #IStandWithDrHorak gaining traction on social media. The love and support bringing this doctor to tears.
And thank the people who have trusted me, who have listened to me, who have guided me, and showed up. You won't find a better place to live.
So, Doctor, let me start off with a couple of quick questions, quick answers, back and forth. How long have you been practicing medicine?
Well, first of all, let me just say thank you for the opportunity to be here. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate your time. Your question was how long I've been practicing medicine. I've been a general surgeon for 32 years. I was in private practice in Detroit, Michigan for 17 years, and then moved to rural Minnesota where I was in practice here for 15 more years.
15 years, okay. So when you say, so when you're a surgeon, do you do all types of surgery?
Well, general surgery is pretty much emergency surgery, elective surgery. I'm the guy that's available when you get sick. We do trauma, you know, I'm trained to do everything. We don't do all of it, mostly because I'm in a small hospital, but I am trained to do what I need to emergently. That's the biggest thing that we do. We show up when there's trauma.
Okay, so somebody's keeling over with an, their appendix has to come out, they walk, they walk into the ER, you're getting the call?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Somebody gets into a car accident, they've got a big, huge rip in their face, you're getting the call?
We always get the calls on the car accidents.
Okay. When you do your surgery, I'm assuming you wear a face mask?
Absolutely, yeah. There is, I've got, every day in my professional practice, I've been wearing a mask.
Why?
Because it's the right thing to do.
Well, from a medical, from a medical standpoint, what does it do?
Oh, it protects against wound infections. I mean, it's designed as to keep my exhaled gases out of the womb. Bacteria, it's to stop the bacteria from getting in the womb for infections.
So in other words, you've got a, you've got a guy in front of you, he's got an open, you've got an incision there, his body's open, so that mask is to cover any droplings to come out of your mouth to go into his open body, correct?
Actually, what it is, is actually reflects everything behind me. The interesting thing is sometimes you cough or sneeze, you don't turn away, you face the wound and do that, so it exits behind you. I mean, it's designed as a barrier. It's totally a barrier.
It's a barrier. Okay. Now with that, with that in mind, the reason why I led with those questions, almost like a little bit like a lawyer, I sound like a lawyer here. I'm trying to build, I'm trying to build the case of why the surgical mask was created. And what I don't understand, and I've never understood it, and I never will, and I've never, ever worn a mask, I don't understand how it is that a mask, especially the masks we see children and people wearing on or about the streets, doing about their business, how it is that that mask would prevent somebody from spreading or catching disease? Do you have any kind of idea of how it is that a mask on any person would really be 100% effective?
There is no 100% effectiveness for that.
There is not?
No, no, they're not, there's no design. The only possible thought might be some type of plastic bubble you're in, and we have those, they're called pappers. We wear those so that your exhale and breathing and speaking and spit all go into a shield, and you're totally covered, and it vents out the back through a filter. Your air comes in the back, it's kind of like you're a spaceman, you know, it looks like a NASA suit. Those are available.
Right. So with that being said, I had an exposure expert on this, on this program, and he said, "The masks are the most stupid thing I've ever seen." And I said, "Why?" And he says, "Because unless you're going to tape that mask around every single part of your face," he says, "the particle of COVID is 1,000 times smaller than the diameter of a single human hair." And I said, "Why? I couldn't even imagine getting 1,000 times smaller." He says, "Yes." He says, "So pluck a hair out of your head and then try to stick it inside a mask." He says, "You're going to have no problem." He says, "So how and why is it that somebody like Anthony Dr. Fauci would switch?" Because remember, originally, he said, "You don't need masks, that's crazy." And then all of a sudden, the narrative switched to, not only do you have to wear a mask, but you should wear a double mask. So I'm trying to understand from a medical perspective, I understand from an exposure perspective, but from a medical perspective, is there any medical benefit at all for somebody to wear a mask when it comes to COVID, in your professional opinion?
Not that I can come up with. The, the idea behind this is, I look at it from the science and stuff, is, and I, and I spoke at this similar to your hair to that, I said, "For the people of Minnesota," at the school board meeting, it was, it was, the analogy was like it's trying to stop a mosquito with a chain link fence. I mean, that same kind of analogy works, because I mean, people up here understand mosquitoes. Every so often, one of those mosquitoes is going to hit the chain link and bounce and turn around and go the other way. All right? And that's the same concept with masks. Things will blow through. You can't stop all of it, not without the hazmat, and at some point, you'll have to take the hazmat off. So, you know, the, the logical discussion falls away as soon as you take the thing off. And so that's there. What drives it? It's not medical, it's fear. It's all about fear. Everything's about fear right now. It's a driven narrative in this, so.
Well, and we're going to get to that in a second. I want to continue building this, this medical case here. So I love your mosquito trying to, brilliant, by the way, trying to stop a mosquito with a chain link fence. I'd like to add to that, let's imagine that mosquitoes don't bite kids, and I mean, that's to me, when I look at everything that's been going on with COVID, and we've covered this extensively on this program, like all other podcasts and programs have, but I have continuously been anti-mask, and when it comes to the children wearing masks, I get, I lose it. I got a 12-year-old, and my 12-year-old, for a very long time, was forced to be, wearing a mask here in Florida because we sent it to a private school. So they were not subjected to Governor DeSantis's rule that you cannot, you know, force a child to wear a mask. And my child was forced to wear the mask, and that's how I got in touch with the exposure expert, because some parents were trying to figure out, what can we do? What kind of information do we need to bring it back to the school? So with that, that in mind, why do you think, and I guess this coincides with the, why did you get up and speak at the school boarding, the school board meeting? I mean, why did you, a guy who's got a great career going, you know, almost 40 years in medicine, I guess your, your life's going as perfect as it could go, and somebody must say to you, "Hey, why don't you go to a school board meeting in your scrubs and tell these people about what it is they're doing and the damage that they're creating to children?" Can you sort of elaborate, and you've got the floor as long as you need it? I want you to talk about, A, why masks are ineffective or useless for children, and is it damaging to children, and then kind of bring us to why it is that you stood in front of a board meeting?
Well, the reason I stood in front of the board meeting, let's go there first, because you're right, I'm like, look at my age, I don't have kids in grade school, and I don't have any skin in this game. Parents in my community, people I've taken care of for 15 years, asked me to speak on their behalf and the behalf of their children. And my wife was very, she was pushing, you know, you know how wives are, they just, come on, you need to do this, you need to do this. And she actually talked to the school board too, she's a psychologist, and so she's got all the information about how the psychology of these masks affect kids, their increased risks for suicide, how they're isolating, how they're turning in, how they, how little kids can't even communicate anymore, how the, how their IQ in the last year has dropped 20 points. And studies looking at this stuff, it's like, because how can a two-year-old, I'm sorry, whatever, whatever kindergartner is, I don't know how old that is.
Five, five.
Five-year-old learn when he can't see the lips or the facial expressions of his teacher? And so he, they don't know, and they get scared to look at you. Have you ever walked down and don't have a mask on, and a little kid who's indoctrinated in this gets scared and wants to run away from you because they see your face? I mean, that's not normal. So that part in and of itself has to be looked at. Physically wearing a mask, I've worn a mask my whole life, all right? It's not going to hurt me. It will make me hypoxic, meaning over the longer I breathe, the oxygen level lowers, but I'm not doing anything, I'm just standing there looking down, all right? That's with a, that's just with a regular surgical mask. The cloth mask, all they do is they get wet, and then you're breathing your own wetness back and forth, plus there's a smell in there that nobody can stand. The worst case is if you sneeze, you need to change it. Well, these kids don't, they don't have that opportunity, they have to just stay covered. And the real, you know, the, there was the serious mask, the N95 masks, have no discussion here. I mean, they're not, they're not usable for children. I mean, they have to be fitted, and you have to be, you know, so it's a whole different world. The parents asked me to come and speak as a professional, giving my professional opinion. It was my opinion. I didn't represent anybody else but myself and the parents who asked me to go there. Wasn't my hospital, wasn't my medical peers, just me. Went there and talked, and I gave them the analogy of the, the mosquito, and I actually acknowledged all the other people who had talked in the room that were my peers, that spoke for masks, you know? And so the school board had all the information that they needed. There was no thinking in my mind that they needed any more information from me, so I kind of stopped that, and then I went down a different path, and we'll get to that, too. So I hope that answers your question. I don't, um.
No, no, so, so I want to stick with the, the health part for a second here. So there was a study done in Florida, and I can't remember which university at Florida, but it was a university, a medical, a medical university, and, and I may just be botching this up a little bit, I may have my details a little bit wrong, but overall, what I'm about to tell you is, is documented. So they, they took an environment in a, in a school class, and I think they took about eight to 10 children and had them have masks all day long.
Sorry, she keeps coming back up here.
Oh, you got your dog, okay. No, it's all right, it's, it's more than okay.
The old man with a dog, sorry.
There you go, listen, I've got one myself. So, so they took children who wore masks and never took them off, and in that same environment, I guess you would call it a controlled environment, they took eight masks, and they just, you know, brand new masks, and they left them there in the room. So you've got eight masks not being worn, eight masks being worn, they came out of the same box. And they took those masks, and they also took the T-shirts of the eight children who were with those masks, so they took the T-shirts, they took the masks that were not worn and the masks that were worn, and they had them tested. The T-shirt and the masks that were not worn showed general particles that you would have in a classroom, no big deal. But the masks that were worn on the children all day for eight, for, for, for the eight hours and nine hours that they were at school, I believe it had 11 dangerous pathogens. And so when you get something like that, I mean, clearly, this is what you're saying, you're sneezing, these children are sneezing, they're drooling into these masks, they're staying on their faces all day long, and I'm trying to think of one benefit, just one benefit, that would come away with somebody saying, "You, child, have to wear a mask." Is there one benefit that you could come up with?
Well, the first thing I can think of is that those dangerous pathogens are only dangerous if they get under your skin, all right? That's normal stuff that's in your respiratory tract. Your body is designed, God's design, makes that safe for you, all right? So re-inhaling it back and forth, it's already in there. Now, that dangerous pathogen, if you bite somebody, would have an issue. The part of this, you know, I always say, just turn the coin over, all right? What you, what you describe is very much legitimate, all right? You turn the coin over, the other side is going to look at it and go, well, yeah, those are there, but those are safe, you know, those pathogens aren't going to hurt you. But let's say, if you don't have the mask on, all those things are now in the environment, which is the way God designed it anyway. If we were supposed to have masks, we'd have a cover over our face, all right? So they're saying, and the theory behind this is, you'll be protected if you can block it, if you're in the environment. That's a theory, you've described it already. If you take those masks off, those same things will be on their shirt and on the eight other masks, they're everywhere. You cannot block, God put bacteria and stuff on this world because it's important for us, it does good things for us, it keeps us healthy, all right? Eat dirt, that's what you really should do. Don't wash your hands all the time. I wash my hands more than you can imagine, all right? But I wash the stuff off, I don't leave the alcohol on, I don't kill all the stuff, and as soon as I do, I just start rubbing to try to get the bacteria back on there. It protects you, it's a normal protective thing. So there's been a lot of, of, it's not misinformation, it's just redirected, it's directed for a different narrative, and that's what we're living in. We're living in these specific narratives to make you think one way, and all you need to do is just turn the coin over, and it makes sense. You have to look at both sides of this issue. Personally, I wore an N95 mask, a surgical mask, and a hood, and I didn't go over completely because I can't see, my bifocals wouldn't allow putting the hood, I couldn't actually operate, but I had a plastic sheet in front of me, three layers, three layers at the beginning of this, when we had absolutely no idea if this was going to make a difference or not, but we had to try something, and we were protecting ourselves, okay? Yes, there's a belief we're protecting the patient, but if I'm the only guy in the county who can take your appendix out that day, I can't be at home, isolated with a flu, okay? So I did that for many months, and then the data came in, and it's like, this probably isn't going to work, and it's probably not necessary anymore. But at the beginning, it had, it had an issue, and I was a proponent of all of that, but not on kids, not on kindergartners to sixth grade. And I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't know how you can play or run in a mask. I got a headache wearing the N95s. If I was in a case for more than three hours, I had to take a break and go get some, just take it off and go breathe, just to clear my head. So putting a mask on a kid and say, "Go play basketball," or the best, I love, this is the best. The band here plays with masks, and then they cover the end of the horns in case they aerosolize something. What? Yeah, no, what?
Doctor, who, I mean, when you look at that, and I want to get back to what you said too, at the, at the, at the board meeting, I don't want to forget that, but when, when you look at that, right, so you've got band members who have to wear a mask, I mean, that just doesn't make any sense, none of this makes any sense, making a child run track with a mask on doesn't make any sense, especially when we know that, you know, nobody's really catching COVID outside. What, if you had to guess where that, where that message is sourced, where is that message starting, and it's just spreading? I mean, I know it spreads through the media, but where it's starting, where do you think that starts? Because I have not spoke to a doctor yet, and I've had, it's got to be 20 to 25 doctors on the program so far, all different types of doctors. Nobody has given me the, oh, listen, this is why this kid has to wear a mask. Not one person has said anything, and this, I want to be very clear in this, I've had some doctors who say, "This vaccine makes absolutely no, it's no sense, it's not really a vaccine." And I've had other people say, "Oh, you know, the vaccine's good, it's got its point, it's helping people who are older, blah, blah, blah." So there's different ends of the spectrum here. Nobody has said the mask is a benefit to anyone, especially children. So where is the source of this coming? Because I had already mentioned to you earlier that when first asked, Fauci said, "No, the mask is ridiculous." At the time, Trump Surgeon General said, "You don't need a mask." I mean, they were almost making a face like it was comical, and then all of a sudden, it switches. In your opinion, where do you think the source of this is?
I think it's, it's fear, it's total fear. It's a fear that grandma or grandpa.
But, but doctor, who's kicking the fear? That's what I'm saying. Who, who is the person who's putting out that original, or the entity that's putting out that original fear messaging?
I don't, I don't think it's any one entity, I think it's individuals. I think it's, people make a choice, they go, "You know what? My mother, as a, as a parent, my mother, this child's grandmother, has medical conditions. They've had recent cancer, they have a heart issue, they've got lung problems, they're on oxygen, all right? So if I can do anything to help my mother, my child's grandmother, I'm going to do it. I don't care if there's science or no science, it's fear-based, I just need to do that for my own peace of mind." And the children go along with that. It's an individual decision. You can't take it beyond that. You can't say, "Science does this, science does that," and the, you're right, the media, they're not helpful, but, you know, that's just the media. They give you what's selling at the minute. I mean, fear sells. The more people you, I mean, you watch that ticker on CNN every day, going up, going up, going up, that gets you used to what the narrative is. So that's my take. Yeah, I don't, I'm with you, I haven't seen any data, and I remember that when the Surgeon General goes, "Why would you ever need a mask?" He's a surgeon, guy's a surgeon, he's a neurosurgeon, he goes, "Why in the world would you put a mask on? It's a virus, right?" And they're all like, "Yeah, and then what?" I'm later going, "I don't know either, but you know what? They're doing it over there, they're doing it over there, let's just mask it up." And all of a sudden, it became policy. We went through that, and we got to the other side, and the state of Minnesota said, "You don't need a mask anymore." I still don't understand how we just have to mask in a hospital when you're walking around. I don't understand that piece, but I think people are a little more comfortable when they come to the hospital, some of them, you know, you should have a mask on. I would be perfectly fine if you walk in without a mask, but there are policies, everybody has a policy, I don't, that discussion, I don't think will ever be answered.
So let's, let's go into, going back, you, you started to say what you had conveyed at the board meeting, and then you said, "Well, I said some other stuff too, we'll wait on that." Let's, let's get to that part. What else did you say at the board meeting?
Well, I spoke, first of all, I acknowledged being there, and then I acknowledged my partners gave an excellent description of the science. And I, and I looked up, I was like, "So I'm not really sure why I'm here, why am I here?" And I went into kind of a, "I need to give you something else, something else to help you make your decision." So I talked about the trauma that was in the room. I mean, I said, "You call a surgeon in when there's trauma, all right? Look around, board members, look at this room, look at this community, there is trauma here. They are in fear, and how do you make a decision in that regard?" And so I talked to them about how I make life and death decisions, because I told them, I said, "Your decisions today will have effect. These are life and death decisions. You may not know how that is, but understand that's what we're talking about." So I gave them examples of how I do it, and I use my faith. People may have other ways of doing it, but I use faith. I pray for people, I pray for discernment, I pray for, for God to show me what I need to do. And I gave them the example of, of today, one of those school board members, by the amount of stress that's going on in their life, is going to need my services. One of them's going to perforate an ulcer, and they're going to call me, and I'm going to have to go help them. I'll come in, because that's what I do, I'm available, I will come help you. And I said, "As soon as I get the call, I'll start praying for you." And when I get there, I'll, when you have your name, I'll pray for you, and then I will talk to you, and I will give you information to help you make your decision, all right? I said, "We will go through what your options are, but you will still make your decision. It is not my decision to make for you, it is my decision to help you make." And I said, "Then I'll, I'll pray again for you, and we will come up with a plan." I said, "But I believe most of my information is, is coming from the training I have, from the experience I have, but also for the faith that I have." To tell you both sides of this, everybody's scared in our community and other communities that a kid, a five-year-old to, you know, this sixth grade thing, might die from this disease, and then a mask might help them. They're, it's a fear-based decision, and so if they're responsible for making that decision, that would be a terrifying thing. So they'll say, "We'll just go with the crowd and wear the mask." And what I talked to them about is first, who does God put these kids' responsibilities into, all right? It's the parents, all right? God gives the child to the parent to educate, to make decisions on health, to make decisions on religion, how they want to raise them up. He doesn't give them to the school board. So I said, "If I was you, just as my suggestion, I would pray about it and see what God tells you, but then look how God designed it, and let the parents decide." So one of the things that I spoke about was probably my religion, religious freedoms. The second thing I spoke about was parents' right to make both healthcare decisions, but also school and education decisions. And nine days after I spoke, I was provided by my employer, two options. One, to resign. One to resign, the second was to be terminated. And the reason I was given was that my views were no longer congruent with my employers. Now, for specific documentation, my employer is Lake Region Medical Group of Fergus Falls. It is not the hospital. It's my peer medical group. So I always make sure that's clear. But that was very given. And I'm okay with that. I've come to understand that that's all the information I'm going to get. Now, this is a month ago, alright? When I started doing these interviews, it was like five days, seven days. So always in the back of my mind, I was waiting for some other big thing to fall. Here's a big legal suit coming. The board is taking my license, something I, nothing's happened like that. So that piece is kind of falling away. So I go back to my view is no longer congruent with the view of my employer. And I don't know what your view that is and I will never know. But I spoke about the right of free speech, if you will, because I didn't represent anybody but myself and the parents who asked me to do that. I spoke about a parent's right to make decisions, both in healthcare and in the, and in the overall care of their child, including an education decision. And my religious freedoms were in there too. Um, you know, they've taken God out of the schools. Can you go to a school board meeting and speak God? There's a little thing on my, my, uh, talk that people may not understand. The city I live in is called, well, I live in Dalton, but the, the school I was at was Fergus Falls. My kids went to that. It's in rural Minnesota. And if you look up Fergus Falls in the Guinness Book of World Records, it will say that there are more churches per person in this city than any other city in the United States. Uh, so I thought it was okay to speak God at a school board where any corner you look, you can see a church. If you can't walk another block, you'll see a church. So I think that's okay to speak there.
When, uh, there was, there was a report, uh, my, my producer got this together, but well, for me before, uh, you and I got together. There's a report, I think it's a local station. Uh, you're, you're talking about the event as it happened or whatever. And you actually get emotional in it. That's the report I'm talking about. Uh, at the end, the reporter references that you said some sort of thing, uh, even a monkey can do it.
Oh, yes.
What is that? What was, what?
Well, he actually spoke it wrong. He was trying to defend him in this. You know, I grew up in Nebraska, right? I lived in Detroit for 20 years. Um, I was trained in Detroit, Michigan. And in our training, um, we were compared to other residents. And there are certain ways to tie knots. At the school board meeting, I was describing to them if they perforated their ulcer, what would happen? And I, I was describing, giving credit to my maker, right? That please do not give me credit for how you heal. I said, the amazing process of this is how the design from the maker heals you. And I said, you'll perforate your ulcer. And I said, it's just two ends and I just take them together and I use little pieces of string to close the hole. And I said, there's no magic in that. Alright, the magic comes in 24 hours as God's design seals that completely watertight. You can't do that to a hose. You cut your hose and put it there, it just water sprays forever and ever. You put tape around it, it's gonna like, not this way, right? I've seen things that people don't understand. And so I'm using that as information. And in my, I don't know what the right word is. In my flamboyance, I said, anybody can do it. I can do it. You can do it. Monkeys in Detroit can do it. That references to a monkey, an actual monkey. His name is Joe Mindy. He was, you can look him up. He's got a website. He, he's a monkey that was in movies in 1932, who lived in the Detroit Zoo and he's got many heirs. You can still go there and see one of Joe Mindy's offsprings who ties knots, but he uses his thumbs, alright? He doesn't use his index finger. You tie any kind of a knot, when tissue pushing now like this, it pulls the tissue up and it rips. Right, and so if in the beginning, when you're learning to tie knots, if you have, sorry, dog's over here. If you have somebody doing that, they will say, oh, you're like that resident we used to have. His name was Joe, Joe something, Joe Mindy, great resident. You're doing great. And eventually one of your other residents go, they're talking about a chimp at the zoo, alright? They're talking about a monkey. They're comparing you to a monkey. Yes, the monkey can tie knots, so can you, but use your index finger, know how to operate. That's what I mean. And I've used that story to everybody I've trained because it's, it has an effect. It teaches you what you need to do. You remember the next time.
And so what, so, so did somebody try to make it sound as if you were making a racist comment that, you know, even monkeys can do it? The monkeys in Detroit can do it? I mean, obviously Detroit is a heavily black, uh, community and very various different pockets of it. So that, is that somebody was trying to say that you were racist, that you were making a racist connotation?
I, I have heard that. Um, I don't really go talk to everybody this way. I mean, there is some social media stuff that came out that, oh, it was such a racist comment. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm an ignorant, old surgeon who says monkey means monkey. I didn't even know monkey meant anything else other than monkey. I still don't. And I'm like going, are you sure that's right? But I also have a hashtag now, after all this stuff. And I thought a hashtag, just a pound sign. I didn't know what any of that means. So there's a whole bunch of stuff I've learned in this last month. It's just beyond my education.
Of course, it's ridiculous. I mean, the, look, I, I don't know how many times I've said it in my life. I know I've said it a lot. Um, you know, come on, even a monkey can do it. I mean, it's a generalization. And so the fact, look, what, what, I could give you a little lesson if you haven't learned it so far. What, what happens is that when you go against the grain of what it is that maybe the mainstream media wants the messaging to be. And a lot of times without bringing politics into this, the far left will, will, will do that same thing. There's this new thing called the cancel culture. And if you haven't noticed it, you've been canceled.
That's what I'm understanding. I'm coming to understand that.
Yeah, you've been canceled. So if you, a person of smarts, a person of education, a person who has very important abilities, life-saving abilities that the normal person does not. So in many aspects, you are more elevated than the average John and Joe, Jane and Susie. You are more elevated. And because you're more elevated and because you're so smart and because you could do things that most people can't, they've got to find something to chop you down. See, one of the other things that was very, very powerful about your board meeting, uh, you know, presentation, was that you didn't do it in a suit and tie or an Isad or a T-shirt and a golf hat like I have on. You did it in your scrubs. So not only was the message coming from a man of smarts, you wore the costume, which made it even better. So now what they've got to do, doctor, is they got to cut you down. They got to say, how do we take this God-fearing, everybody loves him doctor in the community? And how do we make him, and excuse my French, but there's no other way of saying it. How do we make this guy into a, a total asshole? They've got to make you into somebody being like, oh my God, that guy getaway. And that's how they do it. They try to take something as simple as, come on, even a monkey can do it. And they're going to say that now you're a racist. And because once they say you're a racist, they change the whole narrative, doctor. Everything that you know about masks, everything that you know about the immune system, everything that you know about medicine, vaccines, therapeutics, whatever, it gets buried because, doctor, he is a racist. He's a racist doctor, can't listen to him. And so they try to discredit you and you are a very hard person to discredit. Because you could just tell, I mean, I could tell from watching your interviews, you're, you're, you're just a good human being. And so they do that and then therefore everybody jumps on you. Oh, we won't even listen to him because he's a racist. He's not even worth covering. And that is the, that is the shame of it all. Because the real meaning of racist has been diluted so badly that we no longer know what a racist is. And therefore the people who are truly racists never really get called out. Because you can paint your car black. You could have had a red car and you said, I'm going to paint it black. And it could be, oh, you're a racist. Or the other way is you had a black car and you said, I don't want a black car. I want a red car. Oh, why didn't you want a black car? You're a racist. It's so ridiculous at this point and you, sir, are a victim of, of the ridiculousness. So I want to get into, because you kind of touched it, but I want to go deeper into it. So Lake Region Healthcare, your peers.
Lake Region Medical Group.
Medical Group, sorry. They, so you, you, uh, let's roll back. So you go to the board meeting and after you're done with the board meeting, you get out there and every, all, all the audience tells you, great job. And you clap your hands, whatever. Now you go to work. Is there a buzz going around at work like a couple of days after you had done your stand-up? I mean, are, are people starting to talk about it or nobody was even talking about it?
Nobody was talking about it to me. I mean, I didn't see anything. I mean, the community was like, thank you. Um, but it was nine days. And so, no, I was, I was, the morning I was, um, presented with the information from my peers, uh, I had done seven procedures, endoscopies, and I had a six to eight people in clinic for new surgeries. I was working just like I did every day. And from the, from the time I had presented at the board meeting to this, I had operated all week. I'd done lots of things all week.
So prior to you being fired, right? Or I, I should go back. Prior to you getting the two options, was there any news coverage about what you said on the, at the, at the board meeting?
Not that I know of. I mean, there could have been, I, I.
Probably not, right?
I went and talked and walked out.
Okay, so that leaves me to believe that one of the parents in that auditorium or one of the board members on that stage actually picked up the phone and called up and complained to whoever it is, uh, I don't want to say it, to Lake Region, whatever. Uh, they called and complained. And then they called and complained. I mean, I'm, I'm sure you've thought of this, like, how, how did we get to the point of where I even get the two options? Did they say to you, hey, man, we've gotten 50 phone calls from people who are at that board meeting? And, and this is just out of control. Did they reference the board meeting at all?
The school board meeting?
Yeah.
No, no, and I will, it's, it's the design of the contract.
Okay.
I've understood it when I signed it 15 years ago. Um, either side can say, we no longer want your services. I no longer want to be employed by you. And it's separated. It's just a simple contract.
It's at will. So basically, right, so basically what, what I'm trying to understand is that you're going to work, you're doing all these surgeries. Alright, you gave you a little board meeting speech. You, you, you voiced your opinion, take the masks off these kids, right? You don't, you don't have the position, you don't have the right to, 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 to do this. This is the parents', right? God put that there. And that's it. You go home, you go about your business. You tell your wife, hey sweetheart, I did it. I did, we said, oh, it was great. They clapped, whatever. And now all of a sudden, one day, boom, you get hit. Now, do you get hit with a letter? Do you get called up to somebody's office? How is it, how is it presented to you?
It's a, a quick meeting with, uh, the chairman of the board, uh, of a medical group. And I get, it takes about 15 minutes.
So was this a scheduled meeting or was it's what like?
No, it was, it was, it was that morning I was notified of a meeting.
So when you get notified, are you like, oh man, what's this about?
Well, yeah, what's this about? And then you have to understand, I was a member of that board for 10 years. And I just recently been voted off the board by my peers, which was, that's just no big deal. It was my time was done and I, we were coming up for renewal and there were three seats and I was not one of the top three vote getters.
Uh, how many, how many, how many people are on that board typically?
Nine.
Nine people. So there's nine people, nine peers that are on the board that you served on. So you get a, you get a phone call, you get an email says, hey, uh, chairman wants to see you up in his office. And you're like, okay. And you go up to the offices, it's just you and, and him?
Yes, and one other person who's kind of recording stuff.
So you walk in, you got, uh, somebody recording something and they're there. When you walk in that room, you, are you like, again, excuse my profanity, are you like, holy shit, what's going on here? What's this all about? Why is somebody recording this? Or is this standard procedure? You're thinking?
Yeah, no, these are my, my peers. I mean, I talked to them all the time. I actually, when I got the, the notification about the meeting, it was supposed to be after my clinic. And I know the tone of the notification. Alright, there's something going down here. I get it. I finished the procedures I have and say, we need to have this meeting now so I can deal with whatever's coming for this afternoon. I'm not going to sign up nine people for operations or six people for operations and then have to cancel all of them. I said, whatever happens, I need to be, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever this is, you know, and it could have been anything. I mean, I was like, whatever this is, we need to do it now. And they went, yeah, you're right. Let's do it now.
Right, right. But I'm, I'm imagining, uh, because I'm trying to recreate this day. I'm, I'm imagining a guy like yourself, you know, who, who is, uh, like I said, I've, I've described already, God-fearing, you're married, you're happy, you got a great career going on. You, you, you got to be thinking to yourself, oh my God, what surgery did I screw up? Oh my God, did I say something inappropriate in the, in, in, you know, what did I do? When all these things are processing, you can't come up with anything, right? Does, does the school board meeting ever enter into your head as you're walking into that room?
No, uh-uh. It wasn't until six hours later, when the community found out that all of this happened, that they're like, you spoke up for us and this is how your employer treated you. And I'm like.
Alright, let's not get there yet though. So, so when, so you walk into the room and, and the gentleman's sitting there and you sit down at his desk, what does he say? Hey Jeff, uh, listen, I got you in here. Alright, when he, when he gets.
We had a nice conversation about, um, some things that had happened the day before and other stuff and what, what the weather's like. And you know, it's getting cold and we gotta get the boats out and the docks gotta come out.
Small talk, yep.
Yeah, the same stuff we do in the lounge. And it continued and then I was like, alright, let's do this. And we did it.
Yeah, but what, but what's this? I mean, did he, what did he say to you? I mean, when, look, let me, let me, let me, let me do it differently. That may, maybe let me describe to you what I'm trying to get from you. So.
Let me stop it for a minute. Uh, really, there's nothing to get. I mean, this is a contractual thing, alright? The, the, my views and whatever they are, it, it could have been anything. Maybe a view that we didn't even discuss at the school board are no longer congruent with the way the ship was running.
Yes, but here's, but, but the doctor, the part that I don't understand, I'm going to use my kid. So my 12-year-old right now, as you and I are conducting this interview, she's at school, alright? My kid is really super good. 95 student, doesn't get in trouble, doesn't do anything wrong. I mean, I'm a very lucky man. And all of a sudden, right now, if she got a text message from me that said, hey, I want you to see me right after school, come right home and come to my office, we need to chat. Her head would be spinning of every last thing she's ever done. And my God, what did dad find out? And when she comes up with nothing and she sits down in front of me, I am going to say to her, you're punished. In fact, I'm, in fact, I'm taking you out of that school. And then I got to explain to her why. And if I just explain to her, you're punished, I'm taking you out of that school because you no longer are the person you used to be. It's an empty, it's an empty clause. It's, it, there's nothing to it. And she's like, what? What the hell just happened to me? And so what, I'm thinking of a normal flow of a conversation. Yeah, the procedure and the protocol and the going up to the office and, you know, going through the small talk. Alright, that may be procedural and something you realize, but there's nothing there. I mean, they can't even say to you, look, Jeff, you know, you didn't wear your mask when you were given surgery. And, uh, you know, you, you touched two people inappropriately. We got to get rid of you. I'm, you didn't do anything like that. I'm, you didn't do anything like that. So when you're sitting there and you have to, you talk about the weather and you talk about taking the boats out of the water and you go with the small talk and you're sitting in front of a guy you've known for how many years? He says to you, hey, listen, uh, we don't align anymore. You gotta go. I mean, did you sit back and you're chanting, what the hell? Is this a joke? I mean, did, did any of this come as a shock?
It, it was all a shock. But I think the reason the community rallied behind me and this stuff is because I, I don't react that way. All right. My life was not in jeopardy. I'm trained to go into trauma and maintain composure. All right. You can't go and save somebody's life who's ripped apart if I'm freaking out. All right. I don't respond that way. I mean, people used to say, they still do. I've gotten letters and cards from the people I work with. They're like, we always appreciated when you were in the trauma bay. We appreciated when you were in the operating room because you have a, a, a composure that nobody else has. You don't get shaken and I can't get shaken. And in that setting, I could have got really mad and screamed and yelled and stuff, but it wasn't about me. It was about a contract. I mean, my personal belief in what I do hasn't changed because I don't have a job. I get my rewards from a different place. All right. I get my rewards from the cards and letters from the people who talk. 500 people showed up to support me five days after this over their lunch hour. And they had a rally, we named it, what we renamed it to a fight for freedom. And they put on these posters, besides all the flags and stuff, I stand with Dr. Horak.
Right.
And to get into that is like, my integrity would not be shaken based on somebody thinking my views are different. And the only thing that was shaken with me is like, I am really concerned that the people I trust with my healthcare and the way I make decisions don't agree with my views of freedom for speech or that parents can't choose what they should have for their kids or that you can't speak God. I mean, that was my concern. It's like, what's the other side even thinking?
Yeah, but see, the part that I still don't understand and, and like, let me do it another way. If, if a police officer comes up to you right now and says, stand up, Mr. Horak, you are under arrest. I'm imagining the first things out of your mouth is going to be, what for? What did I do? You're not just gonna say, hey, listen, I'm calm under pressure. You had locked me up and all right, that sounds good. Hey, can you just make sure the dog has water before we leave? You know, you're not, you're gonna, you're gonna put a little resistance, at least ask why you're being arrested. And the point is, I'm, I'm trying, let me just, let me just finish that. I'm trying to understand when, when you walk into that office and that chairman goes through the small talk with you and you know something's coming, but you don't know why it's coming. And he says, look, Jeff, our, our, we just don't align anymore. Our messaging just doesn't align anymore. That you don't say, what are you talking about? Well, I, I'm still the same guy I've been for the last 15, 17 years, since I've been here. Like, you don't even ask why. And I, that's the part that I'm like, sort of shocked at because I can't understand the ebb and flow of that. I mean, normal human behavior would be like, why, what did I do? And I was just trying to see whether or not they did or did not say anything, reference anything about the child masking and the school board meeting. Nothing. They, they referenced nothing.
And, and they can't. All right. It, it's a private closed meeting where they made the decision. I mean, it's, it's protected information. It's probably done under executive committee. So there's no documentation of it. And I know that. And I know I'm not going to get an answer. I don't have to ask the question. And we probably did go, I said, is there anything specific? And he goes, you know, it's just the same story. Our views are no longer congruent with yours. And that's the standard answer. And I did ask for some permission to do a couple of things. And it was about taking care of my patients. I needed to know what was going to happen to the people I just worked on and the people I've got out there. And I had to have some time to get some, some things set up for them. So that was actually my first concern. The second concern was, I don't know if I want to be resigned or terminated. I need to talk to my wife. So they gave me grace to make that decision in 24 hours. And then I also asked to speak to the, the CEO of the hospital.
Okay.
Just from a standpoint of, of thanking him for what had happened and to get some things that he and I have been dealing with over the last several months lined up. And, and that's a different, that's a different entity, but I still got permission for that.
Did the, did the CEO sit there and say, you know, hey, look, Jeff, you've been great, you're, 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 uh, the community loves you. My God, how many people have you saved in the ER? We love you to death. I can't believe we're losing you. But at the end of the day, man, we just can't have you speaking at the school board meetings. I mean, nothing.
Nobody said, nobody said anything about speaking that it's not gonna happen. And that's, that's the way this is designed. I mean, this, I, this is not new. This is because people don't understand it. Doesn't mean corporate America doesn't work this way. It is a corporation. This is two corporations working together for the good, what everybody believes is for the good of, of both sides. I lose. I don't think it's good for me, but they think something that I represent doesn't represent them.
And so the community and you and the media at this point are taking it upon themselves to just calculate, it must be that damn board meeting. That it, it must have been what I said at the board meeting because you, you left no other, you'd left no other reason.
Well, people had a lot of examples of like, well, if there was something you'd done, why did they wait nine days? You know, why, why was there, why was this time? And there's like, I don't know. I don't know what it is. And a month later, I'm still looking for the, the letter from somewhere saying you're being served notice for malpractice. It's really huge. But that I would have expected to have been in the first couple of days if they knew something before I did.
Right. So what you're saying is.
Some accusation that I'm going to be arrested for something else, it hasn't matured.
That was the reference you were making in the beginning. Yes. So to clear that up, what you're saying in the beginning is like, look, it's been a month now. The FBI hasn't come on my, knocked on my door, the IRS hasn't knocked on my door, the state police haven't come knocking on my door. No lawyer has served me with a, hey, listen, you know, you were supposed to take out an appendix and you took out somebody's liver, man, we're suing you. None of that stuff has come out. None of that other rationale or reasoning or excuse has hit your box, so to say. And so you're left to just believe that it has to be the school board meeting and your opinions stated about masks, why children shouldn't be wearing them and how the choice of masking should be that of the parent and not of the school board. And obviously that ruffled feathers.
Well, then there's the religion part and the freedom of speech. Those are, you can't look away from that. I mean, if, if we're gonna go down cancel culture, any one of these things can have an effect. And I, I had to look up cancel culture, just like I had to look up hashtag, just like I had to look up what monkey meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm like going, this, how did we get here? How did this, I mean, how is the fear mongering gone so far that we've got away from all of the things that I thought were just what it meant to be a citizen of the United States?
Let me ask you this. If, let's assume you never went to the board meeting and you, you were still working today doing surgeries. Did, I, I, with, at the risk of asking how old you are, I mean, how much longer would you have been a, a practicing doctor? Had this not happened?
Well, probably six to 10 years.
Another, all right. So let's just round it off at 10 years. So you had another 10 years, uh, you know, that, that you were willing to go and work and, and serve the community and earn a living, uh, and probably a good one at that. And rightfully so. You've studied and you've, 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 you've paid your dues. Well, now that you've got this event, does this go on your record? I mean, do you have like a stain that you were released from a hospital system?
I'm pretty sure I do. I haven't figured all that out yet. I mean, it's still too new. I don't know how that works. We're still in the process of trying to figure all that piece out.
So, so there you go. I mean, so right, again, without getting into the legal side of things. I'm sure if your lawyer was sitting next to you, he'd be going like this, you know, don't, don't say anything, don't talk about this part. So I won't go down the legalities of it. But, I mean, you gotta be sitting there right now saying, hey, I still got 10 good years in front of me. And like, they've just stripped me of my career possibly because now if I leave Minnesota and I go back to Detroit or I live, I leave Minnesota and I go to the free state of Florida and, you know, and go, uh, neighbor up next to my friend Dennis Michael Lynch, there's a good hospital there. I could go there. I'm assuming when you go for the interview at the hospital, the first thing that's gonna be sitting there is they're gonna have a piece of paper and that piece of paper is gonna say, you know, okay, he was just released from Minnesota, Lake Region area. Or they're gonna say to you, all right, Dr. Horak, uh, where was your last, where was your last employee? You know, where, where was your last employment? Who was your employer? And then you're gonna have to tell the story. I mean, this is, this seems to me so unfair of what's being done to you. And I wonder when you and your wife talk about this, you know, I, I mean, it's gotta bother you at nighttime. Have you just had your life stripped from you in many ways?
Let me, let me just add a piece that may help you. This, under no circumstances is about me being fired or terminated. It is so much bigger. I was on Tucker Carlson seven days after, I'm sorry, five days after there was a rally on my behalf, speaking this. You know, what I tell people now is the, the wonderful moms of this community who asked me to speak have created an Instagram page for me. And there are 27 videos of me talking, speaking about this, explaining what's going on. I don't have to explain it anymore. You called me to say, what's going on? You've seen the videos. The evidence is there. How you view it, what your decision is, is just like the masking up or not masking. You have to look at it, do your research, come up with a decision. There are people out there, I'm sure, who'll go, your integrity is somebody I want to have working for me. I will hire you. Irregardless of the fact that you were terminated, that you chose termination. And they also know on that side that it could happen again. I mean, I'm not a monger. I've worked in two places, two in 32 years. I committed to two communities. And if you watch those videos and the, the testimonies of people I've cared for and the fact that they got up and spoke, I mean, there are moms who got up and spoke about their kids and how they feel that they've lost the right to speak. That's what it's about. And there'll be places out there who employ me if I want to go down that path.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure there are. And they might be in Florida or Texas. I mean, I know how this works.
Yep.
You know, there is this being awake. That's a piece. We're not gonna talk about it, but that's a piece. I just didn't ever, ever believe that as far out in Minnesota as we are, that, that type of culture, the, the, the cancel culture could reach way out here. Would have never guessed. And I think that's what people are standing up for all around the world. This went to the daily news in England within five days. I mean, it's been posted so many places. These videos are popping up all the time. I got a letter yesterday from a lady who graduated from the Fergus Falls High School in 1994 with a check in it for $500 to me. I'm like, what is this about? And she said, in 1994, when she graduated high school, she was given a scholarship from the Fergus Falls Medical Group to go into pre-med. She said, I didn't go into pre-med. I ended up being a research biochemist and immunologist and I teach at a major university in Wisconsin. She said, but what happened to you and what is going on is so disgusting. I resend the $500. I don't want it. She wrote a check and gave it back. She said, donate it, use whatever you want. But I stand with you. That's the significance of what this is. This is not about me getting a job. It's way beyond that. And my belief, my total belief, it's about we looking into faith over fear. We need to go down that path. We are living in a fear-driven society right now and it's driving all of our decisions. And we've lost our ability to speak and, and to research and to look. And when we do, I've spent 32 years getting informed consent from people. Okay? Everything I do is documented with the point of, I sit there and talk and tell them what I think is best and what I think if we don't do this operation, what would happen? And then I allow them to decide, right? I don't decide for them. And then they sign the consent form that they are comfortable doing the procedure and then I sign it. And we can't operate without those. All right. That happens every day. I don't think people get informed consent on this stuff. I don't think there's enough people even knowing the whole side of the other side of the coin. Whether you're talking about masks, whether you're talking about the vaccinations, whether you're talking about COVID, people are locked into the fear. And what I talked about at that Freedom Conference that morning was about how do you get past the fear? What do you do to make a decision when the fear you have paralyzes you? Well, you can't physically decide. You just go, I don't know what to do. All right. What do you, and I've spent 32 years in that every day. And I have to admit this. For the last three weeks, there's been a, a pressure lifted off my shoulders that I don't have to go make those decisions anymore, at least not right now. All right.
Wow, because I was gonna, I was gonna ask you that. I was gonna ask you that question. I was gonna ask you the question of, you know, hey, you've been pulled from this career, the only career you've known. And I, I saw you get emotional on that, on that one news program. And I, I gotta wonder what it's like to be you waking up every day and not going in with the purpose that you had on a daily basis to go save lives and to help people's health. And now, you know, that's been sort of temporarily taken from you. Is it hard to get up in the morning or is it getting easier?
It, you know what? I thought I'd just sleep in, but I can't sleep in. My body just doesn't go there.
Yeah, I know, I know the feeling. I know the feeling.
I, if we go back to the fear, I put my faith over the top of that fear when I make those decisions. And I shared that with the school board about how to make that decisions and how I pray and look back to my maker. And I, and I gave them the options of what to do. And I still do that. I know that my life will be fine. My faith will get me through this. There is a plan for me. I mean, I was on Tucker Carlson. Give me a break. How big is that? I mean, that's just beyond, and, and you reached out to me, you're like, Laura, your, your Booker, is that what she's called?
My booking agent, yeah, Lori.
She, you know, she gave me a list of, of who you reach. All right. That's amazing. Look what you did. And you reached out to a surgeon in rural Minnesota who lost a job. You didn't reach out for that. You, you didn't reach out, you don't, I mean, nobody, it's not about me. It's about our neighbors. It's about our community. It's about freedom of choice, freedom of religion, freedom of speech, all of those things in that First Amendment that have been slowly being stripped away in the face of a pandemic with mandates and people throwing out, it's a law and it's not a law. And it's, there's so much confusion back and forth. The people are just terrified. They're paralyzed. They can't decide. And if I'm a voice that goes against that narrative, so be it. Cause I know how to look. I know what to do with the research. I can find the other side of the coin. And I'm just asking, flip the coin over, do your research, take back your power. I mean, say, I don't consent. And if somebody's offering you a therapy that they can, cannot provide you consent for, adequate consent for you to make a decision. And they're just saying, you need this, you have to get it. That goes against everything I was ever trained by. I mean, the first rule, the Hippocratic oath, and I challenge all of my peers out there. The Hippocratic oath says, do no harm. If you have a belief that your therapies are doing harm, and look at me, what do I do? I harm everybody. There is not one time that I don't have the belief that what I do couldn't just kill somebody. But I take that responsibility on because I think it's better for them and they think it's better for them for my, our discussion. But if you're not having those discussions and you're just saying everybody's gotta have this therapy, you will be held to a higher level. All right? The Hippocratic oath will come into play, but so will the, I've, I've even read the Nuremberg codes are coming into play here. This is big stuff. So people figure it out. And how do I figure it out? I look to my maker. I pray. I do my research. I do my research in places that are not on the TV, not on the mainstream routes, go to other areas. They're there. You gotta figure it out. I'm not gonna tell you. It's not my decision for you to make. And if you have a healthcare provider or somebody like your employer dictating you, to you, how to make this decision, they better be responsible for all the, the things that you point out, like, what happens if I get sick? What happens if, if I end up in the hospital? And I'm reading stuff now that insurance companies are not willing to pay for the complications of the treatments. You know, that people are like, there's a reported complication to this medication. And there is a reported complication to this. Well, if it's reported, then that's acceptable. But the insurance companies for some of the, uh, the, uh, other therapies are, are not paying for it. I don't know if that's true. I've just heard this.
Right, right. Doctor, so let me, I, I got a, I only got a couple of minutes here left. And I want to leave about 30 seconds for you to give people links or websites or anything else. So this way they could follow you, contact you, whatever it may be. But before we get that, I, I didn't have this written down and what I wanted to discuss, but hearing you speak now for an hour, I think it would be a, a good thing to ask you. And again, you got three, four minutes, the floors are, I'd like you to give me your commentary. May I ask you, are you in your 60s?
No, I'm 58. I'll be 59 in a week.
You're 58. Okay. So 58 years. So you're 58 years old. And I'd like you to respond to this in A, a, uh, medical practitioners get up. And then B, as just an American, doesn't matter what you do for a living. I'm 52. And from a medical standpoint, uh, you know, I have, if my wife said to me, uh, yeah, go get some rubbing alcohol. I wouldn't even know why we're doing that. Okay. So I, I'm clueless when it comes to anything like what you do. However, I'm also in the CBD business. And I can tell you that since I've been taking CBD for two and a half years, I haven't even had as much as a common cold. And there are things there sometimes where I'll just take it and ache and pain, it's gone, you know? So I feel as if my immune system is as strong as it comes. With that being said, if I were to have that conversation with somebody right now, and when it comes to COVID or building the immune system, I'd be shut down. I'd be shut down as somebody who's given misinformation and somebody who's fake news and somebody who's going to, and I say shut down. YouTube would take me down. Facebook would take me down. I don't dare have that conversation. So first question for, from you is, do you agree with me that in all the years you've been alive and especially involved in practice, that this is the most ridiculous time you've ever seen, or at least I've ever seen, when it comes to medicine? We used to embrace second opinions, third opinions, fourth, fourth opinions. And now it's using your analogy, either your opinion is on the one side of the coin or there is no flipping over the, the other coin. You're getting, you're getting canceled. Have you ever seen a time like this in America where the, uh, the health of the nation is so politicized? And then the second question comes sort of related, you know, I just talked about censorship. And one of the most powerful things that we have is the ability to argue our, our opinions and have civil discourse. And in many cases, that's being stripped away. Although you had the freedom to get up there and speak at the school board, you paid a dear price for having that freedom. So I'm, in your 58 years, have you ever seen the constitution in the country in more trouble than it is today? Those two big, huge statements now in your lap. Go ahead.
Like, I think it's real easy. Both are no. Uh, I've never seen anything like this. And in fact, if anything, this experience has opened my eyes to what's going on. Cause I was living day to day in my little world, taking care of one person at a time to the best of my ability. Cause I was living day to day in my little world, taking care of one person at a time to the best of my ability. And that was taken away with the idea that now you need to look around. You're like, what is going on here? How did we get to this place? I mean, how is research being done when the person who's doing the research is paid by the person who's making the medicine? And getting, you know, uh, we used to throw articles away if, if, when you turn it over and said, this drug company is making this study. Or this company is putting this hernia patch out and they're paying for it. We wouldn't even read them. It was like, no, that, that's wrong. That's, there's still, you can't trust that. And nowadays you pick up your phone and my new students, they, and even people I've trained, they challenged me on everything because they like, well, they just push their phone button and it pops up on a, on a search engine. It says, here's how it works. And I'm like, who wrote that? I don't know. Well, how do you know that's right? Who paid for it? What do you mean who paid for it? I don't know who paid for it. But that's the right answer. Cause that's what I was trained. Whatever pops up first is what's right. And we've gone down that way. We've been programmed to make that decision. And I wasn't ever programmed that way. And maybe that's what I spoke up about because I stood up there and say, I can prove either side of this fence from science. It's just how I present it to you. All right. It all can be proven and you've seen this back and forth. They changed their mind. This guy said this, this guy said that. You have to decide, how do I do it? And you gave me the floor, so I'm going to go when I came here to speak.
Good.
It's about faith. All right? Everybody sit back and decide. How am I going to make this decision? Do your research, empower yourself, look in those areas, pray about it. I go to my maker and ask and see if this, what I found is legitimate to what he teaches. And I have faith that no matter what happens, he's in control. My life will be fine. People die. I have spent my whole life watching people die. All right. We all die. Every cancer patient I've ever taken care of, I tell them, we can't keep you alive forever. It's not possible. And when you die, if your faith is in the right place, if you have the faith that I'm talking about, you win the race. Right? You win the race. Go back to that faith. Look at that piece, honor both sides of the fence. Cause you could have the utmost faith and believe the same way I do and still wear a mask or not wear a mask. That's okay. It's individual choice, but your faith won't be shaken. And don't speak to people angrily. You are not called to do that. You speak in love. And you're humble and you're gracious to each other. And you don't fight. You don't beat each other up. And you don't cancel people. You hold them up and ask them their opinion and be gracious with their results. And their, their answers and take and go, that's a good answer. I need to look at that. Have discussions, sit down and have coffee and talk to people. But the last piece is always remember, God wins. God wins. God wins. He has it all. You go that way, you'll be able to sleep really comfortably tonight.
And I imagine that's what your story will be this evening. Uh, with that being said, doctor, if people want to send you a letter or an email or learn more about you or support whatever it is that you're doing next, where would you want them to go?
Um, it, I'm on Facebook. It just Jeff Horak, J F F H R A K. And the Instagram page is Dr. Jeffrey Horak. It's D R period Jeffrey, J F F R A Y Horak. Um, and there, one of my buddies, uh, in our men's group has the ability to make T-shirts and stuff like that. And I sent, um, Laura a link. Um, and you can order, uh, T-shirts that say, uh, God wins or faith over fear and stuff like that. It's really kind of cool. And that was something that the community came up with. And there's a lot of people, a lot of people who are hurting in this community from this. And please understand, this is not about me losing a job. I've been contacted with so many doctors and nurses who are doing, this is going through. Healthcare is going to be a little bit and rearranged. It's going to have to, just like the banking system, just like the politics are, it's all coming around. So try to be, if you're not awake, figure out what it takes to become awake.
And then. Doctor, I gotta tell you, it was a pleasure, uh, having a conversation with you. I think, uh, we can learn a lot from you, not just about masking, but about how it is to, uh, carry yourself and lead yourself during times of adversity. And, um, you know, it's funny, when you were telling me the story about going into the chairman's office, there was, uh, a part of me like, come on, man, what's this guy trying to give me that? But I can just see the way that you handle yourself and the way that you, you, your principles are set. And I can now see you after an hour, walking into that chairman's office, having the small talk. He tells you, uh, look, our, 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 uh, points of view just don't align any longer. And I can see you just taking that like a gentleman and saying, okay, I, I've seen this done before. It's being done now to me. I get it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. I mean, it's, it's the gentleman's way of, of handling things. Um, and, uh, I appreciate you doing it. It's, it's, uh, it's a brave soul. It's, uh, you, you must have unbelievable faith that you're going to be okay because it's a brave soul. Because a lot of people would have stood up, maybe knocked the stuff off his desk, said, what the hell are you talking about? What did I do? I want an answer. You didn't do it that way. You held it that way. I, I think that's a guy I'd like to be operating on me. When, uh, as we say in my day, shit hits the fan. I think I'd like you holding the scalpel. I appreciate your time, doctor, and I wish you the best of luck and, uh, keep us up to date on what's going on with you.
Absolutely. Thank you again. It was a huge opportunity and you are, I want you to know, I've been blessed by this conversation. Thank you so much.
You got to talk to me too. Stay well. Well, there you go. That's Dr. Horak. I think he's a very brave man and I hope that somebody, uh, when he looks to get back into practicing, somebody at some medical center will, uh, bless the community with this man's talents, fortitude and conviction. We need more of it in the United States. Let me just put this out there one more time. I put it out over the weekend and on Friday, dmlcbd.com/gift. Dmlcbd.com/gift. Get in there. We have right now the one ounce miracle me mini body oil, the pain relief body oil, one container of the DML CBD hand and foot cream and one container, or I should say one bottle of the DML CBD face serum. It comes in a decorative, uh, gift, uh, packet, if you will. And my, my, my daughter picked out these little bags. They're beautiful. And it has a card inside that describes each one of the products, how to use it and what it will do for you. And then it comes in a beautiful green bubble pack. So that's what you would hand somebody under the Christmas tree or as celebrating Hanukkah. You'd give them that bubble pack. It's a nice holiday thing. Maybe you want to put a red bow or something like that on top of it. They open it up and they've got the package inside with those three incredible products, three of our most popular products sitting right there. It is fantastic, a fantastic gift to give. And of course that green bubble pack will come, it will be in a nice box with, uh, with peanuts and everything else to protect it and the shipping to you. We are going to be announcing this on Facebook to the 1.5 million people who follow me on the two different pages I have there. We're going to be announcing that on Friday after Thanksgiving. You know, and I know it's going to just go nuts. Typically, if you bought these three products individually, it would wind up costing you all three of them, $175 put together. Today for you, my podcast listener, viewer, my DML app user, my team DML member, we're taking $50 off. You only pay 125. When we put it up on Facebook on the day after Thanksgiving, it will be for $150. So I'm giving you, my dedicated listeners, the opportunity right now to save even more. So you could save 50 bucks. The other people are going to save 25. So get in there. We have a limited amount. We did a, I think we have a thousand, maybe a little less than a thousand of these. We ordered packaging for a thousand. That sounds like a lot, but not when you've got millions of people following you. So I'm telling you, once we start putting this out there in the announcement, it's going to be gobbled up. This is a great gift for you, for you to give somebody. It is, I can't think of a better gift. In fact, my kids are always asking me, what do you want dad? What do you want dad? What do you want dad? And what am I going to get? I'm going to get another T-shirt or another belt. They used to buy me ties. They don't do that anymore. But yeah, what am I going to get? You know, I, 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 a picture, something else. I mean, all nice gifts. I like them all. But you give me something that's going to take away my pain. You give me something that's going to take, oh, uh, and, and hydrate my face in a way that it's, hey, it's on my lines. They're getting, they don't look so bad. You're going to take something that can actually, as it did with me, my feet were cracking when I first got here to Florida. Cause I wasn't used to walking around the flip flops and out on the, you know, out on the hot sidewalks and stuff like we were doing. Like I'm going barefoot, walking to the beach, barefoot. Nope. My feet started to crack at the bottom. I put the DML, uh, hem, hand and foot cream, gone. Next day, it was like, the healing began. I was watching magic in front of my own two eyes. So with that said, that's the kind of gift I would like. So invest, not only that, invest in somebody's wellbeing. Not only that, I should add this in. We provide that card that I told you, uh, you flip it over. It has a 20% coupon for them. So when they start to make their purchases from DML CBD, they could put that coupon in and save 20%. So it's an even greater gift. So that's it. Dmlcbd.com/gift. Dmlcbd slash, dot com slash gift, G I F T. Go there now before the supply is out. My hope is that we never even get to Facebook. That being said, until tomorrow, God willing, may God bless you, our troops, these United States, your entire family, the good doctor Jeffrey Horak and everybody in that community who stood up for that man after he got canceled. Ridiculous what's going on in this country. Talk to you soon.
This podcast is produced by Anita Griffey, Lori McLean, and yours truly. And you could subscribe by going to the Apple Podcasts page and search for Dennis Michael Lynch podcasts. And make sure to leave us a five star review. Or you can download the DML news app from the Google Play Store for Android phones and the Apple App Store for iPhones. And do not forget to visit our sponsor, dmlcbd.com. So this way you can feel great again.